Good evening, everybody. Sorry about the four-minute delay there. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of April 12, 2022. I need approval of the minutes for the March 8, 2022, regular meeting.
So moved. Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Sorry, before I go on, I'm just going to point out that all the commissioners, just please leave your mics on, and if you're not talking, just lean back. We don't need any breathing into the microphones, but we do want to make sure that everybody on the television can hear us and online. Next item is communications from the audience. For items that are not listed as a public hearing on the agenda, the agenda has many items on it. If it has an asterisk next to it, it does require a public hearing, so you will be able to speak to that item tonight. If you have anything besides those that you would like to speak on, you can come forward at this time. Unfinished business, there is none. New business. First item is 875 East 48th Street. Request for site plan and special land use approval for the construction of new facilities for LG Energy Solutions. The applicant can come forward at this time. State your name and your role.
So I'm Matt Craft with Gaffari Associates. Troy Pritch is with Gaffari also, or the AD of record for LG in Holland here. We did the initial program about 11, 12 years ago, and this is kind of the successor program to that. Pretty large expansion to the north side of the property. Several outbuildings, logistics warehouse. But the same use group is the existing building, so no changes there, just kind of more of the same, if you will. Troy can walk through the slides here that Steve prepared, just kind of going through some of the details. But the special land use permit really pertains to the main manufacturing building on the north side, and it's, the penthouse area exceeds the height restrictions, which is what's causing that land use permit from a height perspective. But 80% of that building is 60 feet plus or minus, and then all the outbuildings are much lower in height, so.
If you guys could also speak into the mic, that'd be great.
Oh, sorry.
So just briefly, from a high level, looking at the site plan that everybody's seen, the, all the buildings that are kind of like in the crosshatch, those are the proposed buildings. We've got the main building, which is behind, it's kind of like the white square is the existing building, correct? So that's the, that's the new one, that's the main one behind it, the main manufacturing. I think it's like just under a million square foot, 970,000-ish. And then all the other buildings on the site that are also in that crosshatch are proposed buildings, but they're kind of ancillary support for the main building. With the new addition, we've got a, a new parking lot on this property with a new entryway into the site on the east side. So that's the new parking lot right there, correct? And just to the east, so that is the, yup, that's the main entryway right there. So we have, the good thing about this parking lot location is it's set off 48th Street, allows more from a queuing standpoint for traffic in and out, turning. And then also, what was, we've, we've held some meetings as well with neighbors, and we've walked through landscaping around the perimeter on the north side and the east side of this site. We bought two residential land use, so there's the criteria from a landscape perspective, and we are 90% of the whole way, it's going to be, the buffer's going to be accomplished through tree growth. And with the, just the northwest corner, going to be opaque fence is kind of what we're looking at, which also meets the ordinance requirements. One of the things we went through, that change early in the phase, was the warehouse. It used to be an east-west orientation. We moved and rotated that and accomplished some benefits to both the neighbors and as well to some things for us is from the development side. By turning it 90 degrees, the truck traffic that enters on that is going to be kind of shielded from the residential property, so most of the lighting, the noise, the traffic will be less intrusive. And also, behind the warehouse is the existing consumer's overhead power line. So by not having it in the east-west original orientation, we don't have to relocate that overhead power line. And if that was going to be relocated, it would be pushed on the property line right along that. So that's also a good positive with this, with this arrangement that we have. With the development, we have, or with the expansion on this facility, we had to enlarge the stormwater pond, which is on like kind of southeast corner of the site, just, yup, just south of the parking lot. So that pond is expanded from its original state to accommodate more stormwater flow and also designed to meet city requirements. I think that's all I have. If there's any questions, we'll.
Any questions from commission members for the applicant?
Could you, can you walk us through why you need the higher, the higher building height?
Sure. So the, the, the way the building is set up, similar to the first ESMI-1, the process layout is on the main floor, and then we've got mezzanine space to support those process operations for mechanical, electrical equipment. A lot of that equipment is on the roof, which isn't unusual for these types of facilities. So we planned that early on to put the equipment on the roof and enclose it into, in, inside the penthouses. And it just works well from a operation standpoint and a maintenance standpoint to have those penthouses for that equipment. So that's what pushes that height up. And those two penthouses are on the east side of that main building.
How much of that back, the, how much of the, the, the building will be that height? Because I, I remember you talking about some of it was going to be dropped in.
Yeah, they're, the penthouses, there you go. Thanks, Steve. You can see the rectangular spaces on the north and south there on the, on the east side. So in, in between there, where the cursor is right now, that's not the higher height, that's the lower height. So it's just the penthouse to the south and the penthouse to the north.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the applicant? All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, is there anything else you needed to add to that?
Maybe just a, just a little.
As long as you're talking into the mic, we're good.
Thank you, sorry. Yeah, just a few comments, just real briefly. Again, this, as Troy mentioned, the crosshatch is the area that we're talking about for the expansion. So it's actually, I think, 15 buildings. So the way this would be done is if you award site plan approval, then they would just be able to come in and get building permits to proceed with these other buildings. So the site plan approval is for this whole site, all 15 buildings. And as you've already mentioned, the special use for the taller building. So I think Matt mentioned the taller building exceeding our height limit. Really doesn't exceed our height limit in the industrial zone. We've got a standard for 60 feet, and then a special land use allowed to go up to 100. So 100 feet is really the, the limit that we allow for in the industrial zone. We just want to have that really extra review if you're over 60. If you saw on that cross-section there, the tallest point of that building is 81 feet. So that is the special land use that they are asking for. They've touched on a few other things that I wanted to mention already, traffic in particular. As Troy mentioned, they are putting a new driveway into a new parking lot. I also want to point out that there is some improvements to the existing parking lot. One of the issues with the site right now is to go through their security system. You, you line up in your car and then you have to wait. It has created some backups out onto 48th Street. What you see on the plan essentially are a couple little curb cuts to get into their parking lot. So you'll actually just go into your parking lot and then go through security once you're out of your car. So that will help with the backing up of the traffic in the existing. So they have done a traffic study, our engineers have reviewed that. There are some improvements that are being done in the area. There's just some real minor improvements to Waverly and 48th Street, a little bit to the west. So the engineers have looked at all that as a result of, you know, the full build-out of this, as well as some other stuff that's happening in the area. Really just some minor improvements to the existing system that's out there. Troy mentioned that they have met our stormwater requirements. I don't know if you guys made it through the whole packet, I know it was a ton of pages. I, I just grabbed this one page that they put in their packet to talk about stormwater. I think there's about six pages in there. I mean, they had to do a ton of work to get to that point, to meet all of our stormwater requirements. So I guess I just wanted to highlight that because it was certainly a lot more than just, you know, saying that they just met our requirements. They've done quite a bit of work. We talked a lot about sort of the elevations and the grades when we had the study session for this. Just remembering that on the west side of the site, it's kind of built into the hill, and on the east side of the site, it kind of comes out. So they have to bring in some fill to level this whole site out. One of the things I wanted to demonstrate here, this is that warehouse building on the east side of the site. So this is an area that is being built up, out of the ground, maybe about 15 feet. And so what you see is the landscaping that kind of wraps around this east side of the site. And I wanted to use this just because it demonstrates it very well, I think, is we're not always having them put the landscaping right along the edge of the property line. Putting it closer to the building, up where the elevation changes, we feel like you get more bang for your buck. So rather than have that landscaping quite low, where we would normally see it along the property line, felt like it wouldn't do really much in terms of screening. So some of the screening that you see is up along the edge of that ridge line, where you have that elevation change rather than on the property line. This is also the area that Troy talked about where they turned that warehouse building. One of the things the developer has indicated they'd be willing to do is if they have extra spoils, that they might be able to put some sort of berm out here to help the neighbors out in addition to what they've already done. One of the things that they didn't mention, the advantage to shifting the direction of the building, was this is a county drainage easement that runs along this area. So it really makes sure that they were able to stay out of that area as well for an improvement. This is just that area as it wraps around out to 48th Street. Again, you kind of see the county drain easement here and some of that landscaping up along sort of that elevation ridge to help with screening the building rather than having it, excuse me, at the original elevation around the property line. These were just some of the cross-sections that you saw in that document. If you made it through there, that kind of demonstrate that same, that same thing. So you can kind of see where that landscaping is being placed on some of those elevations around the building. And then I just threw in here again, I think we saw this before at the study session, just so you could get a sense for those elevations that are out there in this area that is nearest to the residential use to the east. And so you see that grade change going down to the county drain and then back up where those homes are. Again, the warehouse building itself, that elevation, that floor elevation, they were able to push that down into the ground a few feet, which again was something that the neighbors were, were asking for. So that is just a real quick run-through for the, for the report. You've gotten all of the other comments from the city departments. I don't think that there's anything unusual or out of the ordinary in those. I gave you the special land use standards and the site plan report as well. Some of those requirements, some of those standards, you know, that, that's something that kind of applies to a lot of different things. So it doesn't mean that all of those standards wouldn't directly apply to the height of this building. I certainly suggest that the 80-foot-tall building in the industrial zone is not unusual and certainly worthy of the special use permit. Staff is recommending approval of the special use permit for the additional height and recommending approval of the site plan. I did note in here, I talked about earlier, the bicycle parking. They are providing, I think, 52 bicycle parking spaces. Just for reference, that equates to about a million square feet of building space, one per 20,000 in the industrial zone. That is a ton of bicycle parking. If you, if you do the calculations for all of the usable space for this site, I think they would need about 84 bicycle parking spaces. I'm suggesting that the 52 that they're showing is adequate for their site.
Great. Thank you, Steve. Any quick questions from anyone? All right. This item does require a public hearing. So at this time, if anyone is desiring to speak on this, they may come forward at this time. Okay, I will close the public hearing. The Planning Commission now can have discussion or motion.
I've got a couple of comments and then we'd be ready to make a motion. I did, Steve, go through the entire packet. I did not double-check and cross-reference all of the stormwater calculations. I'm assuming that those are correct. Some of those charts got a little bit small for, for my old eyes. But I was, I was struck by, and I, and you'd said it as part of your report, nothing that unusual or out of the ordinary with this. And we're talking, but we're talking about 15 buildings, 1.3 million square feet. And I was reminded of a scene in the movie Hoosiers where they walk into the big stadium. They've been playing in a small basketball gym, and they walk into the big stadium and they pull the measuring tape out and say, "It's the same size court as it always is." And I think that's something for us to keep in mind with this, is that the same standards that we have throughout the city apply to a project that is 10,000 square feet to one that's 1.3 million square feet. And I was really impressed in looking at the, looking at the packet and looking at the information, that out of all of the, that's being done here, there are basically a couple of things that they're asking for. One is a, you know, the, the special land use for a height that's, that's over 60 feet, but not even to the full 100 feet that it could go. And a, a small reduction in bicycle parking. And I'm, I'm a big fan of bicycle parking, but I'm not sure that there are going to be as many people working in that 970,000, 970,000 square-foot manufacturing facility. They're going to require that. If it was a different kind of use, I would be, I think, pushing for more of that. But I'm ready to make a, a motion unless other, other commissioners have comments that they'd like to make. I, I would recommend first that we approve the special land use for a height of the main building for over 60 feet. You said it was 81. I'm, I'm wondering if we need to put a little buffer in there. I'm not, whether commissioners are good without, just saying they can go up to 100 if that's what's necessary. I'm getting, I'm getting nuts. Let's, the special land use up, up to the, what's, what we fully allow of the 100 feet. So that would be my first motion.
I'll support that.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right.
And then I've got a, a second motion that I recommend that we approve the site plan with the comments and conditions noted in the staff report, including the reduction in bicycle parking as shown on the site plan.
I support that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Thank you very much for coming out, gentlemen, and for the very long and accurate report that you provided to us. It's great. Thank you. Have a good night. Next item on the agenda is 717 East 24th Street. Request for site plan approval to amend the previously approved site plan.
Wait. Skip central that.
Mine are switched around.
Oh.
I'm sorry. This is the one that was sitting in front of me. So I guess, which order are we going in?
You can tell me which one you want.
I already said it, so we're going to do Magnus Capital Partners first. 717 East 24th Street? Okay. I'm not sure. So, gentlemen, come forward. State your name and position.
Hello, I am Eric Maing with Hooker Young Architects, the project architect for the project.
And I'm Jake Backler with Magnus Capital Partners, Director of Construction.
Great. Go ahead and speak to your request.
So we are here tonight to present some changes that we made to the project. I think this, this project was approved last year, I think. I think at that point, we had seven buildings, and we are now reducing that to three buildings. The same number of units that we had before, just a reduction in, in the number of buildings. The biggest driver for the change is our ongoing discussion with discussions with MISTHA. These are, the Home Flats brand is a MISTHA-financed brand, which means that we need to comply with, with their standards or work with them on their standards. One of their standards is a parking requirement for two spaces per unit. I know the City of Holland's requirement is one space per unit. I think what we had approved before was, I think, 1.3, if I remember correctly. So we have revised our site plan to include more parking. We are currently at, I think our, we went 1.5 for one, for ones in two bedroom units and two spaces for three bedroom units. So we haven't fully complied with a MISTHA standard, and we've, we've historically been able to go back and forth with MISTHA to, to kind of negotiate that standard in, in specific. So that, that was the biggest driver is to, you know, obviously to get more parking, we had to reconfigure the site. So instead of the, the multiple buildings that we had, we had some four-story, some three-story, some one-story retail buildings in the front. We basically brought all that stuff together into a, into three separate buildings. So the override, the overall idea is the same. We still have that Central Boulevard that we had in the original proposed, approved plan. And that Central Boulevard is really meant to kind of make it feel like a, more of an urban site. So the floor plan for those two L-shaped buildings, really, we have the retail up front. So again, we still have that retail that faces Waverly, just to give it that, that storefront feel there. And then along both sides of the, the Boulevard is where we have our resident amenity spaces. The Home Flats brand that we've been working with on multiple projects is really to provide a very resident amenity-rich. So our, our project in Wyoming that we've, that we're just finishing, we kind of have a similar concept where we have, you know, we have your, your community room or your club room, but we've got, you know, a kids' playroom, we've got a fitness room, an indoor dog park. What else do we have in there? Workspaces, game rooms. Really trying to, to drive that high amenity-rich stuff. So we'd envisioned the same thing here for this project as well. One good thing that came out of the reconfiguration was I know there was a lot of discussion to align our drive with the drive across the street. And we couldn't quite get there on the last approval. I think we still got approval with it misaligned. But as part of this reconfiguration, we were able to, to align that. So that's one positive that came out of the, the reconfiguration as well. And our drive to 24th is still the same as what we had before. And then we were also, you know, in our, our utilities, originally we had a sanitary that came down and was going to go across the adjacent property to, to make that connection. And part of this reconfiguration, we're able to reduce that. And I think we're connecting now off of Waverly. So a little bit, you know, less infrastructure that we needed to, to provide there. That covers the gist of our changes.
Great. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
What was the parking space per unit number that your, came to on this one?
What did I have? It was kind of a, it was like 1.75, about 1.75, I think.
And MISTHA wants two, but you're going to try to negotiate with them?
Yes, we've been historically been able to, to kind of negotiate with that, with them because it's just, we don't want to produce these projects that have just, you know, tons of parking. We did, our project in Wyoming, I think, is at 1.6. And I think the parking is, is, it's adequate there. There's not, you know, people parking off the street and all that kind of stuff, so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
I've got a quick question. Now you mentioned lots of amenities on the ground level. You mentioned other projects. Is that something that's concrete here? That you know what's going to go in here, or you're just reserving that space depending on the need?
I mean, at this point, we're just rever, we're reserving that space. We haven't fully programmed that out. But that's like what I listed as some of the stuff that we have provided.
Any other questions or comments from commission members? All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Steve, was there anything that you wanted to add to that?
Sure. Can't resist. So just a couple of things, maybe just to point out.
Make sure your fans can hear you, okay?
Excuse me?
Make sure your fans can hear you.
The, just a couple of things to point out. The existing plan, the, the current approved plan, these buildings in the middle, those were the four-story buildings. The other residential buildings were three. As they mentioned, the, the retail buildings along Waverly were the one-story building. Maybe one of the only other things they didn't mention in terms of amenities, just because I thought it was very interesting, they, they were building a larger plaza area, area here on the corner, Waverly and 24th Street. They've talked about having an art display area out there. And then they've actually included additional pickleball courts with, with the revised plan as well. We've talked a little bit about parking. You mentioned it here already tonight. I think the new plan is an increase of 76 parking spaces from the approved plan. It isn't a PUD, so these are, these changes are what is presented and what you guys have to review and approve. Their PUD resolution is in your packet as well, and that has the, I guess what I'll call revised language in there as well. So I can't recall if you guys do that as a, just a voice vote, it looks like. So we need to approve the resolution if you approve the site plan as well, however you want to do that.
You're talking about two separate items?
Two separate items, yeah. So yeah, we're recommending approval of the changes as you see them.
Okay. Gotcha. All right. Any questions?
Steve, did you say now with the proposed plan that all three buildings would be four stories?
So now all three buildings are four stories.
Okay.
Yup, there's a, this was the elevation drawing that they gave you.
It's a big change from the original. But I see some rooftop spaces up there as well.
Yeah, they have a rooftop terrace on both buildings. I think that might be something too that you have to, you're working with MISTHA on.
Yes, that's correct. One of the other MISTHA requirements is for balconies and patios at every unit. And we've kind of got, tried to get away from that. I mean, we're, we're really trying to provide a workforce housing brand. This isn't necessarily family. So we're, you know, we've argued on other projects too of like, we don't want just those balconies where people just put their stuff and, you know, they hardly ever use them. This has been very successful at the, at the Wyoming project as well, where every building has a rooftop terrace. They kind of face each other, you know, are able to provide furniture, you know, you know, really create that sense of community instead of just having a little tiny space that you can go out on your, on your balcony. So yeah, this concept, we have, actually, each building, I think, has, has two of those rooftop terraces right now. So that's another way that we've kind of been working with MISTHA to, to kind of tweak their standards a little bit instead of just blindly complying with what they want to see.
Oh yeah, there's six of them, aren't there?
Right. Yup.
Great.
Yup.
I appreciate the community feel on this, for sure. Any other questions or comments? No? All right. This does require a public hearing. So at this time, I will open it to the public if you'd like to speak on this item. If you could state your name and address for the record, and you have up to five minutes.
I'll be quick. I'm Emily Leaveancey. I'm at 605 Melrose Drive in Holland. And I thought I'd take opportunity to introduce myself tonight. I did email the Planning Commission last year about this project at 717 East 24th as well as the Rest Haven project that you'll talk about. as well as the Rest Haven project that you'll talk about. I won't repeat my questions or anything. My, my main concern is too many units in one area. The question I, uh, new question I have tonight, you mentioned the Public Plaza on the corner of Waverly and East Twenty Fourth. Not sure how big that will be and how close it will be. It is a very busy intersection, and you mentioned maybe art display. So, that's a question I have, how that would work. But otherwise, I thank you for your review and appreciate the overall consideration of what's best for the community. I guess I'd leave you with my question or request is considering other developments going forward, maybe fewer units at, at one location. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? You can come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and you have up to five minutes.
Tim Dykstra, six two nine Melrose, we're neighbors. We're here for something else, but the only question that I really have is, how many parking spaces were there?
Can you speak to us, actually?
Oh, I'm sorry, how many parking spaces were there?
Steve?
And the?
The total.
And the current approved plan, there was two hundred and eighty, now there's three hundred and fifty-six.
So, there's two hundred and fifty-six?
Three hundred and fifty-six, correct? Three fifty-six.
Three hundred and fifty-six. So, three hundred and fifty? I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, Steve, on the proposed?
Correct.
Yes, okay.
So, there's potentially, potentially, three hundred fifty-six vehicles going into that corner.
There's two separate entrances, yes.
Has anybody here spent time on that corner? That's, that road is crazy busy. And I am not certain that the, that Twenty Fourth from there, uh, east would be able to handle half that traffic. It already backs up when the light goes on way down the hill, so that's the only, that's the only concern that I've got, but.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else from the public to speak on this item? All right, I will close the public hearing at this time. Would the applicant like to speak to the Public Plaza art display?
Yeah, I can, I can touch on that. Um, I think it's, when we say Public Plaza, we're not saying this massive, huge thing. I think our concept was, instead of just having a sidewalk right at that corner, was to have something that kind of addresses that corner, more so than just kinda, you know, here's our sidewalk, and there's our project. It's just something, maybe there's a gateway, or archway, or signage, or something on there, just so there's something at that corner, instead of, you know, just your standard typical little sidewalk there.
Are you considering like a walk-through sidewalk that's separate from the corner?
Um, I don't think it was really that. I think it was just, again, something there at that corner to make it tie that, the whole development to that, that corner, instead of just having a project over there.
Okay. Great.
Just to kinda soften that corner a little bit more than, than what's there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Steve, was there a traffic study done on this?
I'm not sure if there was one done originally. Certainly, our engineer has reviewed the revised plan as well. So, I, I guess I don't know. Yeah, Mark is telling me there was a traffic study done originally on this.
Yeah.
The number of units didn't change.
Right, yeah, I guess that's the point, and we're not here to, we already have that many units approved. The parking really is a little bit irrelevant to the, the number of cars, I guess I'd say.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from commission members? Yes?
Oh, I, I, of course, I always have comments.
Okay.
I, I really liked the plan with the, with more buildings. I, I, it pains me that MISTHA is requiring more parking spaces when the city is clearly determined that we probably don't need them. It's, I, I do not like seeds of asphalt, I would much rather have that be green. We're hearing that from the developer as well. I'm gonna encourage the developer to push back on MISTHA as much as you possibly can. If you were able to get it down to one point six in Wyoming, you know, one point seven five is great, one point six is better. Every spot, every parking space that you can remove from this development, I would encourage you to, to do that. I'm guessing there's a cost savings to you in that as well. I like the idea of the smaller, the smaller buildings with the lower heights. But one of the things that we definitely need in this community is more workforce housing. We need more subsidized housing in this community. This is an area where, yes, there is a lot of development that's going on, but that's because there's, this is the area where there's a lot of land that's available for this type of development. And it's frankly, it's just down the road from the location of the last applicant that is going to need a lot of workforce, that is going to need to be housed. We need to be able to find those opportunities that are there. And I'm ready to make a, a motion. I would move that we approve this site plan, we recommend approval of the site plan with the noted comments. And then, do we want a second motion on the PUD agreement, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I move we, uh, we approve the site plan.
Support. Oh, Lynn supports this time. Is there any discussion on this? I just wanna take that pause, I didn't last time, and I apologize for that, but, no? All right. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? All right.
Uh, and then I also move we approve the revised PUD resolution.
Support. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, great. Thank you for coming out again, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is the three seventeen Central Avenue. Request for a site plan and special land use approval for a two-story mixed-use building. Applicant is downtown ID. Come forward, gentlemen, state your name and position.
I'm Drew Durham, I'm the property owner and the person that's hoping to develop this property.
And Craig Engler, Driesen Gunner, Associate Civil Engineer.
So, not a lot has changed since we came in here for a study session. We've just made some small tweaks to the building, more aesthetically and functionally. But yeah, so I don't know if you guys wanna scroll through it, but the main thing here, the variance, I just wanted to touch on that, the, the twenty-foot depth versus the twenty-five-foot depth that UDO asked for. It really is multiple reasons that we're, that we're asking for that. The commercial space being smaller, it gives us two options for two different sizes, so we can hopefully get two different types of businesses in there, versus both being large spaces. And I did just wanna point out that that is also only on the south half of the building. The entire north, north half of the building, and the one that fronts the corner, kinda the prominent thing, is gonna be a hundred percent commercial. So, yeah.
And I'll walk through the plan. It looks very similar to what it looked like when we were here for our study session. One of the changes, stormwater was pulled away from the property line a bit. Underground detention would be happening on the site. So, with the church being next door with a basement, we wanna make sure any infiltration is away from their basement walls. So, graphically, that's one of the bigger changes. Steve had mentioned in the, the study session that we have our, our glazing percentages, and that's one of the, the items where we fell slightly short on the Central Avenue side, but well exceeded it on the Thirteenth Street side. And we also do have window space on the east-facing parking lot side to, to create a, an inviting entrance, commercial entrance from the sidewalk, coming from the east there. And we are just very slightly underneath glazing percentage on the upper level, which we would probably be able to work out through some architectural tweaks before construction. Other changes that we've had is we've eliminated outdoor bike storage on the, the back parking lot and have taken long-term bike storage in, interior to the building beneath the stairwell. So, we're, we're happy that, that that's available to residents to have their bikes inside and out of an enclosure. I did read through some of the other comments from Engineering and Transportation about the parking spaces out along Central Avenue being pulled up so they don't extend past our, our property line on the south. So, overall, all the items in the staff report seemed very reasonable and doable. Should, should an approval be determined tonight, I'm confident we can make those changes without any layout changes to the plan. For landscaping, we have landscaping on the east side. We're electing to do a, a solid landscaping wall through plantings up against the, the church to the east, but going with an opaque fence on the south to shield the vehicle activities from the backyard of the residence to the south. So, we, we certainly intend that to be a completely opaque, likely wooden fence that would match the aesthetic of the building. Other items that we've got, we've got the five parking spaces and one ADA parking space with the three proposed street spaces. And then the existing Central Avenue parking spaces being as the three out front and the existing spaces would be used solely for commercial use and would not be assigned to any residents or otherwise, other, otherwise assigned to, to them. So, they would remain public, with the intention of the one space per unit behind the building. Other than that, I think that, that covers the majority of the site. There's not a whole lot of options for this site. It's kind of the extreme of LGCom, I think. This entire building and site could fit inside their detention basin easily, so. Otherwise, yeah, if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
I got one more comment. Hey, Steve, could you go to the elevation of the building? That one's perfect. So, you see the architectural detail on the corner? Those openings, that actually, that detail actually took away from the glazing requirement. So, if you actually incorporated that opening of the building, that would be a walk-through. If that was a glazed surface, we would meet the requirement. So, it's kinda like, we're trying to go above and beyond to make a nice architectural detail, and it ended up taking away from the glazing. So, I just thought I'd point that out, that it's actually a nice detail that is why we're not meeting the requirement.
I believe the corner element also.
That's what I'm talking about, yeah.
The corner element and the archway, yeah.
Correct, yeah.
It also provides more sightline for people turning and for more visible pedestrian.
Both, both walking in, driving.
Correct. Thank you for that.
Yeah, any questions for myself?
Yeah, any questions from commission members? No? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, was there anything that you needed to add to this one?
Yeah, I can't resist, I guess. So, just to back up a little bit, this is in the NMU zoning district, so I just have a quick copy of the zoning map there. You can kinda see it surrounded by the residential zoning district. This is their landscape plan, they talked about that a little bit. So, what they're asking for tonight is site plan approval for the mixed-use building. It's five residential units, along with that commercial on the main floor. You saw the floor plan here, again, just to kinda point it out. This is the unit here on that Central Avenue frontage that is twenty feet deep. That whole building is forty feet deep, so, you know, they've cut that in half. And so, it's not meeting that twenty-five feet, you know, our original idea of twenty-five feet depth of the commercial space. So, it is not a variance, that is just something that the Planning Commission has authorized to grant as a reduction to that amount. At least my sort of take on that twenty-five feet is, we were probably trying to make sure we were getting some, you know, viable, some real commercial space. I think you're getting it with this plan, even with the reduction of the five feet. They've mentioned the glazing, the reduction in the glazing. Again, just kind of briefly going over that, I think it's on the main floor, they have to be sixty percent, and I think they're fifty-six point eight percent along Central, almost seventy percent along Thirteenth Street. And then the upper story, we say thirty percent, and they're at twenty-nine point seven. So, they are really close. I think they're meeting the intent of what we were looking for. And again, that is something that you guys have the authority to grant, so it's not really an exception as much as, you know, I think it's providing some flexibility as you, you know, can't figure out all these things and what every building is gonna be designed. So, I think we're getting what we, the intent of what we wanted when we came up with those requirements. The bicycle parking, again, just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that there are actually, I think it's two spaces. Again, you guys can reduce that. They are providing four short-term and five long-term. That's two more long-term spaces than what's required. But then the commercial area requires, or at least the standard is a minimum of four. But you can have, you, you can reduce the amount of bicycle parking. So, I guess, at least in my mind, the way I was looking at it, is there two less spaces than what maybe the ordinance calls for? But you can grant a reduction to that as well.
So, you're saying there were how many internal for the residents? And then you're talking about customer? Or visitor?
Right.
Bicycle parking?
Right.
Which were how many externally to the building?
So, they've got four out there.
Okay.
They've got four now.
Okay.
But when you add the commercial space, you know, there's, the standard is a minimum of four. So, that would be eight. They've got a couple extra of the long-term spaces, though. So, depending on how you're looking at all that, I guess I was reviewing that as two less short-term spaces. In either event, you have the discretion to, to grant a reduction to all of the bike parking. Again, I guess I'm suggesting that the nine spaces that they're providing is meeting the intent of our ordinance.
Okay.
And then maybe just a real quick conversation, just because our UDO talks a little bit about the building facades. I know it's maybe a little bit hard to see on the screen here, but the bottom half is supposed to be brick. The top half is a clapboard siding, they've talked about fiber cement. Just kind of a review of the neighborhood real quick, I think that is very consistent with what you see out there. You see all sorts of different siding out there. You kinda do have that brick and siding feel right next door at the church, so I think it'll, it will blend in nicely with what is in the neighborhood already. So, the staff is recommending approval of their, of their site plan and both of their special land use permits, as well as the reduction of the parking for the bikes.
Okay. Any questions for Steve? No? All right, thanks. And this does require a public hearing, so if anyone is here to speak on this item, they can come forward at this time. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have up to five minutes.
My name is Deanne Huxama, and I live at seventeen West Thirteenth Street. This is the third plan that's been proposed for this site. It's also the third plan presented that doesn't meet the basic zoning requirements outlined for an NMU property. This ass, plan asks for approval of a special land use to allow a fifth apartment, if I understand it. This site would allow one to four units, and it requires a special land use in order to have that fifth apartment. It also then asks for waivers to the depth of the retail, and an exception for three off-site parking spaces, which, based on the plan, would be the three parking spaces specifically for the businesses themselves. This plan meets all the requirements for the residential units, but it seems to always reduce and eliminate the requirements that benefit the business tenants. There was a lot of discussion about zoning standards during the development of UDO. We often heard that much thought and consideration was put into the standards that were adopted. In the case of NMU properties, specific standards were put in place as a way to ensure that these building projects would provide a meaningful and viable business component, as well as a residential component. This is an empty lot. It is possible to develop a business and a site plan that meets all the zoning requirements. And these standards are clearly presented in UDO. It may seem a small thing to approve exceptions, waivers, alternatives, or not. It may seem a small thing to approve exceptions, waivers, alternatives, or non-conforming structures, but this undermines the intent of Udo, the master plan, the zoning standards, and sets precedence for future projects. All the special requests, waivers, or exceptions being asked for seem to have resulted in the expansion of the footprint of the building, which causes the building to take up space that could be allocated to the additional off-site, off-street parking for the business units. The logical solution is that the building footprint could be smaller. Then there would be plenty of space for the business parking as well as the resident parking off-street. To attract long-term businesses, there are things that are needed and adequate dedicated parking is one of them. Dedicated parking means off-street parking. As an accountant, I understand that an extra apartment makes money and that parking spaces do not make money. However, profit can be made while following the rules. A buzzword lately whenever we hear about parking is walkability. And yes, it's nice if a business is accessible to walkers. But ask a business, business owner that you know if they can survive only on customers who can or do walk to their shop. I run a small business. I provide accounting and tax services, not only to individuals, but to other small businesses. And I can tell you that business revenue would drastically decrease if our only clients are the ones who could walk to our office. And it would decrease even farther if it came from only the people who actually do walk. Because people drive. In the winter, people drive. They drive when they're going back and forth to work. They stop and run their errands when they're going back and forth to work. Parking is important and to relegate all the business parking to the street where employees and customers have to compete with each other for those few spaces, hope students and others who already use this area as public parking is not going to help a business survive or thrive at this location. We are also disturbed by comments that we've heard like, we hope this makes the developer lots of money. Is the profitability of the developer to take precedent over following the rules? We've also heard the rationale for approving plans based on the plan being attractive, the building beautiful, the idea wonderful, or the developer is accommodating. Attractive, beautiful, and wonderful things can happen even when the zoning rules are being followed. We appreciate the work that the owner has put into the outside appearance of this building. We appreciate that it will blend with the community. But we are asking that the planning commission have the developer come back with a plan that follows the standards and doesn't immediately start with a request for special uses and waivers. The addition of that fifth apartment in itself adds the third parking space that now is going to be relegated off-site. If this plan, if this building is taking up too much of the, of the property space, that means it's using space that could be allocated to those off-street parking. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else is here to speak on this item, you can come forward at this time. Please state your name and address for the record and you have up to five minutes.
Ooh, that's nice. Uh, will do. Rob Walcott, 8 East 12th Street, Centennial Inn, and then also 18 neighboring East 12th Street. I have, uh, two daughters at home, so five minutes of time, listen, people listening to me is not a bad deal.
Yeah.
You just tell me when I'm done. So I moved into the inn about two years ago and I've been at 18 East 12th Street for 17 years. And I thought I'd just come share my, you know, as a, as a neighbor, I have three different residents that I can sit and look at this parcel. I'll see this building hopefully for another 40 years, as I live there. I guess if I can get my, I have these, Central Ave to me is a, is a street I've really been watching, especially since coming to Centennial Inn. You'll notice in the wintertime, that snowmelt just activates that walkable street. And as a person that loves being downtown to walk, I get super frustrated by river and I wonder how can we end river? And I've recently turned that, you know, aggressive, you know, unbecoming angst into more hopefulness as I watch Central and see how easy it is to move up and down that street. So I watch that in the winter and I also, year-round, I bike. I take my daughter to school. She's at about 30th Street down Central, one street off. So I'm able to bike that route twice a day with, with my daughter. And find that Central is, 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 there's a lot of untapped potential in Central as a pedestrian street. You can go all the way south in Holland, you can funnel into it and take it in a very pedestrian-friendly way, all the way up into downtown with the great changes happening in Centennial Park. This is the corner that you can see Centennial Park and there's a lot of great chemistry happening there. And you could really take it down to Wind of the Waterfront, you could take it to Windmill Island. So I just see a lot of, with thoughtful planning, there's a lot of good that can happen there. And then you take, of course, I should add the corner of 16th Street, there's some commerce going. So I've been watching this project closely and I even messaged the architect a little bit as I was wondering, you know, first I said, I really would love to see more retail and bigger windows. And I was really impressed with the thoughtfulness of how this building is constructed with the, you know, five units, allowing one to be ADA accessible, bringing that down and losing five feet of retail, which at first I was like, why you lose that? But allowing, you know, ADA compliant, so there's no elevator, which is more space, bringing the budget down. You have a few units really close by, know roughly what they'll get with, with rentals. And I think, you know, I can see how you'd want to have five there. I do have to say, I would be concerned if I saw those windows get tinted. I'd be concerned if, you know, you saw, you know, accounting or something go into that small space and see the blinds go and it becomes more of a brick wall. But that's, you know, they can make big windows and that could happen. That's kind of, you know, I'd just love to see that if it's possible to, you know, decide who rents there. But I'm very hopeful. I'm really hopeful with that retail space. I love that Chamford Corner there, a word I just learned a minute ago. And of the one, of the buildings I've seen as, as a part of a walkable neighborhood that has mixed use, I mean, I'd love to see more commercial texture and vibrance. I like big windows. I like, you know, more eyes on the neighborhood, makes the whole neighborhood safer. So having, you know, a little more density and vibrance at this corner, I think, is great. I trust the architect who, who I've talked about this corner a couple of years ago too. And I just think there's a lot of thoughtfulness in this building with consider, consideration for Holland and the development as well. So as I wash dishes at the inn, I can see this spot and I won't mind looking at that. And I do a lot of time washing dishes, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walcott. All right, anyone else to speak on this item? Please state your name and address for the record and you have to, up to five minutes.
My name is Daniel Holly Lowry. I live at 318 Central, right across the street. In the interest of full disclosure, I am employed by the same parent company that owns Broad Street. But I'd just like to express my unreserved support for the project as it stands at this point. There's been a lot of consideration that's gone into creating a thoughtful, adapted implementation that works in the context of the neighborhood that surrounds it and integrates both the residential and the commercial space that people want to see in their places where they live. Good cities aren't built around isolating retail to one spot, productivity to another spot, living to another spot. It's an integration across a spread of space. And this building fits well in that context, in the space that it's planned for. The facade and the massing and the proportion of the building fit well in the surrounding context of the existing buildings in the form of the old hospital, the Centennial Inn, the church, the surrounding Vaneklausen buildings and other waverly stone-based structures along Central and offers a further expansion of the needed livable spaces in the city. Again, I will express my unreserved support for the project. But I would like to take an opportunity, just given the context that it appears in the project regarding how the space is used with bicycles and pedestrians and cars. If you look at the, I want to say it was the landscaping slide, you see that the footprint of the parking is the same square footage top-down approximately as the building itself. And this is space dedicated around car-centric transportation as a mode, as well as introducing the spaces on Central Avenue. Given commentary that addresses not enough parking, the continued direction of car-centric growth is not a sustainable path forward. And this project in its consideration, given the regulatory constraints, does a good job of addressing the space available with the needs to fit inside of those regulations and the demands of the people who will live and work there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else to speak on this item? You're not the public. You are the applicant. This is only for the public at this time. If anyone else would like to speak on this item? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Any questions, comments, or motions?
The mayor always has comments.
Would you like to go last? Anyone else would like to go?
I'm happy to go last.
Okay.
One question on the, the parking out front. That's not overnight, right? That's strictly daytime parking?
You're talking about the space between the sidewalk and the road?
Right, the street parking, yes.
Yeah, that would just be on-street parking.
Okay.
Would, maybe one thought I have, just looking at the plan itself, would be, and going to the comment about, you know, parking for the businesses, making sure that there's a clean, accessible parking spot for somebody that may have a disability that isn't kind of in the residential realm, which feels a little bit more on the backside of the building. So thinking about one of those three spaces on the front, if one of those would be accessible for somebody who has that need. If that makes sense? I don't know if that's.
Well, that's probably a better question for the applicant.
Sure.
I think in terms of the barrier-free requirements, I, I think it's one space for maybe the first 20 or 25 spaces.
First 25, yeah, right.
I guess if they wanted to assign more, you know, something else.
If the applicant would like to come forward, you can. I think we have a couple of questions too.
Were you suggesting that because the ADA space is behind the building, it appears more residential?
Yes, yeah, yes.
So moving it, don't add one, but.
Right, right. Having some level of an accessible space or two so that somebody who was coming for one of the retail spaces would have access to that might be at least either a consideration or even just having, you know, some sort of on-grade access from that parking area to the sidewalk.
Possibly having two behind, maybe even. Are you asking that of the applicant?
Yeah, maybe that would be a question for you. I, I'm, I'm thinking more about like, to, to the comment about, you know, you know, business-related parking, having some level, I don't know if somebody had, say that the accessible parking area in the back was taken up. Is, would the development along the road, is there any sort of like at-grade access? Or would you have to go out into the path of travel to get up onto the sidewalk?
As it stands, yeah, that would be a curb. So we'd maybe do a, a dub-down or something there.
Yep.
I guess it's, the other thing just to point out is all the on-street parking north of 12th Street, that's on both sides of the road. So I know obviously there's concern about parking. It's kind of in a unique area where there's only one block.
You speak into the microphone.
We're only one block away, there's public parking on both sides of the roads along Centennial Park. So that is almost what I'd call additional parking that's a one block away.
There is also the opportunity to flop the hatched area of our current ADA space so that the hatched area would be potentially shared among two other spaces. We do technically have an additional space, so that would be an un-reserved or unmarked potential ADA space.
I think I agree with you Nate, that there's, there's good pass, there's a need for it.
Right, I would, because I think the, the comment about having like some, like an ADA accessible, like apartment, that person could be parked there all the time and then there wouldn't be that, you know, accessible pathway to any of the commercial businesses that are on the road.
As we get into designing the grades for the, the street parking, we'll make every attempt we can to provide an accessible access.
Yeah, I think even that idea of even flopping them and just having them available, I think links a lot of sense, so.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Luis, did you have one?
No, I'm just kind of contemplating my head about the parking as well, because I do like the ability that the spaces are smaller.
Is it, oh, it wasn't on, I apologize. It looked like it was from my side. You know, contemplating the need for additional parking to really be able to have enough clientele or enough business for those commercial spaces. But with the size of them, I think for me, that's more of a starting up where someone that doesn't need 1,500 square foot space really wants to start off with something small. You know, how many would they have necessarily coming through all the time? So would those three be sufficient or is parking a block away, you know, good enough? Or is it going to curb someone from saying, oh, I drive by, there's no parking, I'm not going to support this business? So that's kind of where, where I'm torn between being able to, to say, you know, with the less parking, is that okay?
I don't know if I'm going to let you talk.
He's not public.
He's not public and he's not, no, I'm just kidding. Mark, what would you like to add?
Just a quick comment and I, I never like to correct Steve because usually he's the one that's correcting me. But, so, but in regards to that, the on-street parking along Central Avenue, I think the way Steve, and I'm, I'm looking at the conditions of site plan approval here, I think the way that we have it set up is that they need to go to city council to get a revocable license agreement to expand the parking there. And then along with that, that license agreement, they can ask city council to have 24-hour parking there, much like we just did with the, the church repurposing.
Because it is between the sidewalk and the road, it's not on-street parking, right? It's different?
Exactly. So I think that that could be 24-hour parking. Now, it's not, it's not exclusive to them though. It could, it's just open parking, anybody could use it. But it would be very similar to that, that church repurposing that we did. So just wanted to point that out.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
My only two cents is the owner is a commercial real estate agent as well, whose job is to kind of get businesses into space. So I trust that the parking would make sense if, you know, that's kind of his job to get people into space. So you've got some expertise there in the owner trying to get commercial in and, you know, get it viable, so.
I guess now that Mark opened that up, realistically, do we want 24 hours on Central? Can we prevent that from happening? I don't know if I necessarily want to see that open to a license.
I have no problem with that, personally. I.
Unless you have to walk by and they're parked above the curb, you know, like they do at the church there.
This is not an, I mean, there are definitely some high parking times in this neighborhood, but it is not every day or all the time. I mean, you live in that neighborhood, I live in that neighborhood, I walk by this a lot. And there is definitely accessibility by car if you need it in this, in this spot. It is not hard to get into this spot by car. And because, as one comment was made, this sidewalk along Central is snowmelt. So there is very easily accessible by pedestrian. And I did many walks down Central this winter down here and walked by this site. And I think this would be a great spot for me to run in for something if it was that kind of a commercial space for a coffee or whatever. If I need a birthday card, if that's the kind of business that's in there, I can get in and out quickly. And I can walk right back home and I would do that. And I think that there's definitely a generational change there, that more urban feel, that more walkable neighborhood, that desirable neighborhood is the one that's walkable. And this business definitely addresses that. I have a social work background, so I actually really, really appreciate the fact that there is an apartment on the main floor that is ADA accessible, that provides more housing. When this neighborhood, a lot of the houses are five steps up and that makes it really hard for people to be able to access housing in this area. So I actually really appreciate that and I am willing to waive that. So, I actually really appreciate that, and I am willing to waive that depth need for commercial space for the need of that kind of housing in this area. That's just my two cents. Would you like to make your comments?
If everybody else is all set? Because you guys, I love the specifics on this stuff. I've got a special feeling in my heart for this lot. Maybe it's because I had my first ever Stromboli here when I was eighteen years old, when it was Great Lakes Pizza, and ever since then, I've always gone by it looking long and wishing that there was something commercial. Yeah, I'm really old.
Talking about generational.
And I drove by it for years. I actually looked at this as a site for my office at one point about twenty years ago. I, this is a great lot, and this is a great spot in a great part of the city, and frankly, this lot and a plan like this, I think, is one of the big reasons why we did Udo. I think it's a big reason why we did the neighborhood mixed use. I think that this is a great plan for this site with that neighborhood mixed use. To use my second tape measure reference of the evening, I actually took a tape measure in my own office this afternoon to see what's the difference between twenty feet and twenty-five feet. My office is twenty-three feet deep. There's more than, and there's a desk and a credenza and a library table, and a set of civic center seats and a conference table, all in that space with plenty of room for my dog crate and to walk around. And so, when I looked at that, I thought, what's the difference? Is that really going to impede somebody's ability to be able to use that as a small office space, which I think is an ideal potential use for this? And Jen, as you were saying, it's a commercial real estate developer that's looking at this that is going to take, hopefully, take that into consideration, because it's his dollars that are risk, at risk in this regard. And are we being asked to make some special land use approvals on this? We are, but that's why there is a planning commission. That's one of the reasons why these boards are put in place, because the rules that we put in place and that we work very, very diligently to put in place and to try to make fit as many places as we can, don't fit everything. And, and yes, there have been accommodations that have been made by the developers in this. This is the multiple plans that we've seen for this site, and the ones previous, I wasn't that set on. This one I really like, and I think it hits the mark, even though there are a couple of special things that need to be done with this. As I said already, the five-foot reduction in the amount of commercial space, I don't think is a problem. You know, the twenty-five foot that we put there was not a hard and fast rule, it was, that's, that seems like a good amount of space for a business. And the reduction in the glazing requirements, I can live with a point-three percent deficit on the upper stories. I wasn't as sure about the larger deficit on the lower stories until it was pointed out that it's because of, now I've forgotten what the term is that was used for that, but the Champford corner, thank you, Nate. The Champford corner, which I think adds a whole lot to the building, both design-wise and functionally, and makes it look like it's more part of the neighborhood and part of, we are a planning commission, part of the plan that we had in mind when we were looking at neighborhood mixed use. And in regard to bicycles, I think if I understood this correctly when I read it, they've added more permanent residential bicycle spaces than are necessary and have reduced the number of commercial bicycle spaces. So, where normally a commercial space requires four bicycles per commercial space, this one's going to be four total, which is two for each one of those units. I can't imagine where there are going to be a circumstance where there are that many people coming for commercial uses for that space where those spaces are, where those spaces are going to be used. So, having said all of that, I'm prepared to make three motions.
Okay, do we have to specifically about the parking and the one that we have to make a motion that then sends it to city council?
That would be, I think that would be part of the site plan approval with conditions, correct?
So, it's in the report as part of Ryan's comments from transportation, so whether you want to single it out and make it a separate item, or you just make it part of the conditions that are in there, it's in there.
Okay.
Can I just, I just want to respond, and I agree completely with what Nathan said. I also want to add that part of the, well, the reason that I am inclined and would support the reduction in commercial space is because of where it's located. If it were along the street, that might be a whole different conversation, but I think that it doesn't take away from the commercial frontage, and I think that your explanation of it being adequate space, and, so I think that, for me, that, I think these are reasonable waivers to request in this particular case.
Yes, and I would add too that, like you said, I would agree with the glazing being taken away by a very, very nice entryway, so, yeah.
I believe the term is Champford corner.
Sorry.
Champford, Champford. So, with that, I would make a motion for a special land use approval for the five-foot reduction in the amount of commercial space along Central as proposed by the applicant.
Support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
And I would then make a motion for special land use approval for the reduction to our glazing requirements as proposed by the applicant.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
And I would move, we approve the site plan as proposed and contingent on the noted conditions being met, those conditions being in the staff report, including the reduction of bicycle parking spaces as shown on the site plan.
Support. Lynn supports. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
No.
All right. Looks good, and does this go on to anywhere else, or are we good here?
So, the revocable license will go to city council.
Okay, revocable license will go on to city council, great. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming in. All right, next item on the agenda is eight seventy-five East Twenty-Fourth Street, request for site plan approval to amend the previously approved planned unit development site plan. Deidre Reisman from Rest Haven is the applicant, and if you would like to come forward at this time, she's hiding, or the gentleman can come up. You both can come up. State your name and position, please.
Good evening, I'm John Tempest, civil engineer with Driesing and Associates, representing Rest Haven on this project. Deidre is with us.
I'm Deidre Reisman, I'm the president and CEO with Rest Haven.
So, we have been working diligently over the last several months with Rest Haven and with THW, the architect and land planner, to really fine-tune the plan that you approved last July, and that's really the best way to describe the plan that's in front of you, is a comprehensive fine-tuning of that plan. You'll notice that substantially, all of the critical elements of the project are as they were on the original approved plan. The number of units, both in the assisted living and the cottage units and the independent living are all, unit counts are all the same, but the building footprints have changed a little bit, the orientation and location of those buildings have changed a little bit, which has in turn affected setbacks, you know, slightly. We are complying with all the minimum setback requirements for the PUD, but, you know, a number of those things have changed slightly, and that's really what has brought us here tonight, is the sum total of a lot of very minor changes brings us back for an amendment to the PUD. So, just quickly, I will walk through some of those changes and highlight some of the items. As I mentioned, building footprints have changed mostly fairly minor. You'll see the most significant changes in Building C, which is the assisted living building. Square footages, a couple of them have gone down, a couple of them have gone up, but generally the building sizes and locations are all the same as they were before. We did add to the plan the future drive at the northwest corner of the site, which would connect through to the future public road. That was actually a condition of your approval last July, so that is now on the plan. And some of the parking areas have changed, so you'll see just in general tweaking of those parking areas throughout the site. And so, the unit count on the parking is slightly different than it was before. It's actually now two-hundred-and-fifty-four total parking spaces. I think we had noted on the plan two-hundred-and-fifty-eight, but it is actually two-hundred-and-fifty-four, so it's an increase of three over the two-hundred-and-fifty-one that were in the approved plan. And where those changes occurred, there was a slight increase in the surface parking, but then a slight decrease in the interior parking of the two independent living buildings, which are Buildings A and F. So, the unit, the parking count in those two buildings went down by two spaces each, but those buildings still have forty-one parking spaces each, and there are forty units in each of those buildings. So, guest and visitor parking throughout the site is basically tailored to what we believe is appropriate and adequate for our use. We did add a pickleball court, so I think that's the second time this has been brought up tonight, down toward the southwest area near the community building. That's an amenity that we know the residents will enjoy and use and appreciate and require. We did tweak the utilities and all the technical components based on the reviews and the comments and the discussions we've had with the BPW and with Brian White, et cetera. And then, you know, there was a slight revision in the phase boundary to actually incorporate a detention area that was outside of the phase boundary in the original approved plan. So, those are the highlights of those changes. I'm happy to answer any questions. Deidre is available to answer any questions as well.
Yes, any questions or comments from commission members?
Just a comment, thank you for the pickleball courts, they are very popular.
Indeed, they are.
I had just one question on the residents. Is it mostly independent? Is it, you know, what's an overview of the residents and what their backgrounds are?
Sure, so there's a hundred-and-four independent living units, twenty-four of those are condo style, and then eighty are apartment style, and then twenty-four licensed home for the aged, assisted living, memory care. So, a hundred-and-twenty-eight total units, but a hundred-and-four of those are independent.
And just to point out, all of the darker areas on the plan are the Phase One, correct?
Correct.
And then the Phase Two is all the lighter gray?
Correct.
Okay. And I really appreciate the other drive that you put in there, that's great. This is a big plan, and I think that three, well, actually, you have four entrances and exits in there, and I think that's a good idea. Any other questions or comments for the applicant? All right, thank you. Steve, did you need to add anything before I open the public hearing?
I guess I'll just add that you've got the PUD agreement in this packet as well. It is redlined, so you can see the changes on this one a little bit easier. So, similar to our other PUD change tonight, site plan revisions and the PUD agreement.
Great, thank you. At this time, I will open a public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward on this item, they can do so at this time. Okay, I will close the public hearing. Any discussion among commission members?
I move, we approve the revised updated site plans.
Support.
Any discussion?
I know, right to it. I like it though, it's fine.
Any discussion? No? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great.
And I approve, we, I move, we approve the updated PUD resolution as indicated on the redline version.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, good. Thank you for coming in yet again for this project.
Thank you.
Yes. All right. Next item is request for removal of sidewalk segments at Thorn Apple Ridge Condominium Association.
The most exciting part of the evening, I'm sure. I'm Mike Hamilton, I live in the Thorn Apple Ridge Condominium Association. I'm a board member. Emily, you've heard from already, is also a board member, and Tim is on our capital improvement team that's been working on this project for several months. Basically, we're asking the, for the approval to remove all of the sidewalk that's currently in concrete and to replace it with asphalt. We already have received approval to remove and replace the concrete that's in between the driveway and the roadway with asphalt. We need your approval to remove all of that concrete. I'd like to point out that the concrete that goes from the entranceway, the pathway from Twenty-Fourth Street to the beginning of the horseshoe, I'll call it, would remain concrete, that's not damaged, that doesn't get traffic, because there's a curb there. And also, at the bottom of the horseshoe, yeah, in between that section, that would remain concrete as well, that's the south side. We get very little traffic there, but the traffic we do get does a lot of damage to the concrete. So, as we've looked at this and looked at various ways to replace, what needs to be replaced, our board is recommending that we replace everything with asphalt. And I'd like to point out that the sidewalk goes around just the inner ring of the development, and if you can see from one of your handouts where the red Xs are, those are the spots that would, I believe, have to come out anyway in order to connect the driveway to the roadway, and instead of having this checkerboard pattern of asphalt, concrete, asphalt, concrete, it's more cost-effective and we think more visually appealing to simply have asphalt. So, the concrete that would be removed, there would be asphalt there, so we would still have that kind of walkable space, but it would be asphalt instead of concrete.
Any questions for the applicant?
Oh, I do.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Appreciate that. Mike and I go way back. So, you answered one of my questions already, which is, that's like, really, you were going to remove the asphalt just in front, in front of the driveways, and there was going to be this checkerboard pattern? So, that makes all the sense in the world to me. Are you going to, thinking of doing any kind of street marking, anything in order to kind of keep people from driving in that area? Is there a lot of walking that goes on? The safety is the thing that's come to mind, and I'm sure it has with you guys as well.
We've thought about that, we've discussed it quite a bit. One of the nice things about the development is we get very little traffic. Basically, the snowplow that comes in, to snow, to plow everything out, and delivery trucks, and the postal carrier, and the residents, that's really all the people that come in there. And honestly, many of the residents, including myself, when I take our grandchildren out for a stroll, we go right down the road. Now, I'm not, as opposed to the sidewalk, because there are two of them, we can't all fit on the sidewalk anyway, so. So, there's not a lot of traffic. What else was I going to say about that? Yeah, we've debated it, whether to paint a line or not would look good, and again, most people, many of the people just walk down the road anyway, because there's so little traffic. That might encourage some to kind of stay to the side, as maybe this concrete sidewalk does now, but, yeah, from my, I've lived there three years, people walk all over the place there. I'm not encouraging people to be unsafe, but it's just the reality. The current sidewalk that we're talking about removing is flush with the driveway, and so that concrete sidewalk, again, just gets beat up, and you can see from some of the pictures what shape it's in. So, I guess to answer your question, Nate, we've, we're looking at that possibility, there's some concern about how aesthetically pleasing that would be to paint a line all the way around the inside, when the residents who live there recognize that's where we should be walking anyway, ideally. Yeah, hopefully that answered your question.
It does, thanks, thank you.
Just to confirm, the plan is to pave then where the sidewalk currently is, so it would be at least as wide as it is now.
Correct.
Just a question, I'm not very familiar with this development, as I am with some other condo developments in Holland, but would it be more advantageous for you to just make that extra lawn? Or no?
No, because it's a fairly narrow roadway.
Okay.
Which is one of the reasons that the current concrete gets beat up so much. Which is one of the reasons that the current concrete gets beat up so much. The delivery trucks and when we have extra visitors, they kind of park on the street, they're really parking on the sidewalk. So if we had grass there, my concern would be it, it would get driven over a lot.
That was going to be my next question is, do guests and delivery trucks park on there now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
Well, it's a terrible design.
It is.
It is.
Of course it invites people to park.
Because there's no brake with, with green space, so.
So, yeah, for reference, just doing a quick Google takeoff, it's like eighteen feet wide in the asphalt area and then like another four feet for the, the pavement. So it's like twenty-two feet wide total, edge to edge.
And the minimum lane for a road is ten feet.
Eleven usually on a traveling road.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that is crazy.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, this does not require a public hearing?
It does not.
Okay. This is just to the planning commission to approve or deny, correct?
That's right, it's just a, it's an amendment to their plan since, uh, you know, I think originally sidewalks were required in the development.
Gotcha.
I have, I have a staff question.
Yeah.
They, um, Mr. Hamilton said that the association, he's, he's laughing, Mike and I have known each other for years. Um, Mr. Hamilton said that uh, the, the condo association had been discussing painting a line there. Would they have to come back to us if they chose to do that? Can they just paint that line without?
I hope not.
I, so, well, that's what, that's really what I'm hoping as well. I mean, I would, I, I'm just wondering if there's anything that we can do here now to eliminate that need for them.
Can that be done administratively?
It's a private street, so I think you can just let that do with it.
Cool, all right, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Well, I just want to say that I always, I'm always reluctant to get rid of sidewalks because it just seems like people are against sidewalks, but this is such a ridiculous design. I can't, I can't justify removing them.
So I have to say that I was the staff person here back in ninety-seven that reviewed this.
That was the nineties.
Yeah. So it's all, it's all true, but I mean, there was a lot of constraints with this development and uh, the planning commission really kind of bent some of the rules back then. I mean, we wanted to see the development happen. The, the street was really narrower than it, what it should have been. Um, but the planning commission also wanted to have sidewalk and I don't know if any of you remember Craig Rich? Yeah. Craig Rich, I don't think, he wasn't on the planning commission, but it was just everybody's, you know, was just like, no, we need to have sidewalks. We need to have sidewalks in even condo developments like this, so. So we made the developer put in a sidewalk, they didn't want to do it. But this is really kind of the only thing that they could do and it, and it was really subpar being right aga- against the street itself. But it was a sidewalk and it met the requirement of the planning commission and we did it. Now we're twenty-five years later and it's all beat up.
It's not like you had to make a confession or anything.
Thanks for saying what I was thinking, I appreciate that.
Well, and it might even be safer because now people will walk on the correct side of the road and be more visible with cars versus everybody only being able or thinking that they're on the one side. So it actually could be safer.
So when we were doing the staff report with this, I know, I think Steve and I talked about it a little bit too. We, we thought about, well, should we, you know, recommend putting a stripe? And it's like, no, not really, because if, if people are going to walk in the street, you want them walking against the traffic, not with the traffic, so.
All right.
But I'm sure in their, in their conversation, I think, looking at the damage of that sidewalk, yes, it's where all the trucks parked. No, they're not going to stop doing that. So whatever you put under this new asphalt, make sure you build it sturdy enough.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
Um, I'm, I, I agree with Lynn, I, I am all in favor of sidewalks, but I think that this is one of those instances where no sidewalk is better than the sidewalk that's here. So uh, I, I recommend that we, my motion is that we approve the proposed amendment to the Thorn Apple Ridge Condominium Development Plan as presented.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Hamilton, for enjoying all of the other previous applicants that were here tonight and um, we hope you have a good evening. All right, communications and petitions, scheduling of public hearings, there are none. Communications from commission members? None?
Happy Easter.
Communications from staff, thank you Dave, happy Easter. Communications from staff?
Just a couple of things.
Oh, you couldn't refute, or?
I can't resist.
Yeah, can't resist, huh?
So uh, the non-motorized open house, uh, you guys got notice it got rescheduled.
Are you talking into the microphone, cause I can't hear you barely.
I'm sorry. The non-motorized uh, open house got rescheduled for Thursday, four to six. And um, not to confuse you, but we are also having uh, an open house for the ice skating uh, community engagement, uh, that is starting to ramp up a little bit. And so there's a couple of opportunities, I wanted to pass that along. On the eighteenth, from six to eight, there'll be an open house.
May eighteenth?
April.
Sorry, April eighteen.
April eighteen.
April eighteen.
Tax day.
And the nineteenth, there'll be an, another opportunity. The nineteenth is um, I can't remember what we were calling that Mark, the design.
Session.
Design session. So that's kind of an all-day thing, um, but I think the couple of times that I would probably interest you when they're um, you know, kind of going over sort of in the beginning of the day when they're kind of developing some of that and then in the afternoon when they're kind of reviewing what has been put together. Ten to twelve-thirty is sort of that morning slot and then one-thirty to four is the afternoon. That's the nineteenth. The open house is the eighteenth. Six to eight.
So public open house, April eighteen for the ice skating rink plans, right? Public input?
Yep.
From six to eight?
Yep.
On April eighteen?
Yep, and then this design session on the nineteenth.
Is that open to the public?
It is open to the public.
Okay, and that is all here?
It's all here.
Okay, and then you said this Thursday, April fourteenth?
Four to six.
For the non-motorized.
For the non-motorized.
All right. Anything else? Okay. Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Everybody say goodbye.
Bye.